All right, good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. This is a meeting of the Akushnet Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Gentlemen, Mr. Murray, our Eagle Scout, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd love to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, we do not have meeting minutes to approve. Just a couple of things in the meeting mail. We had a couple veterans who wrote in about some of the services they've been provided and helping them. And so I just wanted the board to be aware of that. Is there a motion placed on file?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We do have a letter from Representative State, State Representative Paul Schmidt, but he will be here around 4:45, so we will park that and get to the main show today. I'm going to ask Mr. Hinckley to emcee this, since he was there on Saturday. But we've got a special young man in that. This is really kind of cool for me personally, because I've known your dad for an awful long time. I think probably going back at least 30 years when we used to work out at the YMCA.
That's right.
If only Andy Friedrich was here right now to see this moment, right?
Exactly. Who'd have thought it?
So this is really awesome. But with that, I'll turn it over to Bob, who represented the board on Saturday, and you can speak about Matthew and the presentation.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the absolute pleasure of joining Matthew Murray at his Eagle Scout ceremony this weekend, and I honestly think I was more nervous than he was. The amount of support from the rest of the troop and all the leaders there was absolutely amazing. It was a great ceremony, and I got to meet Matthew for the first time. And he is an incredible young man, destined for greatness, and he has a great support system, and I'm very happy to have him here tonight.
Great. If you would go to the podium, please, and talk to us about your experience.
Yes, so my project was on Perry Hill and Mendel Road, right at the corner. It was actually a historical site. It was a schoolhouse back in the old days, but it had become really overgrown, and really, no one knew it was there. We didn't know it was there during COVID. We were walking, and we found it. We're like, wait a minute, this could be a good Eagle Scout project in a few years. But we got there, we cut a bunch of stuff, a bunch of brush back and everything. We appeared a well pump that was a real historical marker itself, and mulched it, planted flowers. If you go by there now, you'll see a bunch of tulips grown and everything. But yeah.
It's gorgeous.
Yep.
What inspired you to take on that project? How did you come about it?
Well, like I said, when we were walking that one day in COVID, I did find, we found it, me and my family, my sister, my mom. But what inspired me was really just, I don't know, I felt like in our neck of the woods a little bit. There wasn't really any park. I mean, you have Pope Park down the street that I bike to sometimes, but like, there needed to be something there. And there it was, right under our noses.
That's awesome. I mean, I drive by it a lot, and you know, it's the benches. So who did that? Did you guys make those benches?
We actually found a guy to make those benches, but they were, they're very nice.
Absolutely gorgeous. Absolutely gorgeous. The guys who were cushioning it.
It's, can't think of his name right now.
Because they look great, and I think something like that would look awesome at, say, Lake Street maybe?
Oh, yeah.
If we could get ahold of him.
Yeah, we would get to support that.
They're heavy too.
They're like.
They're heavy. It takes about eight guys to move those things. They're not going anywhere, bikes around with kids, that's for sure. Jasper?
No, I just find it, for a young man, it's really commendable. Congratulations on your Eagle Scout badge. I just found it interesting that, out of a young man's mouth, he says what we used to say, and what we still say is, "Down at our neck of the woods." I came out of his mouth, and I was like, "Really?" You know, you can see it probably comes from his dad, great guy, Mike. Great job with your wife, with this young man right here. He's, as Mr. Hinckley said, you know, the sky's going to be the limit for all you, my friend. Just stay focused, right?
Yes, sir. Show me the books. I do have books right here if you'd like to take.
Yeah, please. You know, I mean, your family comes from a long line of public servants, right?
My grandfather was.
That's true.
State representative. Father-in-law, my grandfather was a longtime school committee man in Perry Haven. He was chairman for about 10 years.
Yeah, so pretty amazing.
Is this mine to keep?
No, I can.
Oh, it's not?
It's in addition. I can make you one.
I thought Mr. Hinckley says I already have one, so I.
No, I got to look at them this weekend.
Oh, all right. Yeah, it's like cool.
He's like when Bob Kraft met Putin, and he put on his Super Bowl ring. Putin kept it, and he wouldn't give it back.
I'll give it back. It's really cool, though. I just think it's great, you know? I see our DPW truck out there. Mr. Tripp, Matt Tripp, one of our DPW guys.
They really helped.
Great guy, always looking to help the kids and the scouts, so just awesome for the community.
Yeah, we really couldn't have done it without them either. We had like, the amount of brush we had and just the break that we had to get rid of, that we probably couldn't have done without them, you know? All the supplies they gave us. We had a tree trunk and like, really a dead tree. That was almost impossible to remove without them, so.
That's awesome.
Mr. Tripp's been a longtime leader with our troop, and Matthew awarded him the Eagle Mentor pin at that ceremony for all the work that he performed with Matthew.
Bob, here you go. You can finish the job. Bob held it back from Saturday. He wanted Representative Schmidt's citation to be the show there, so Bob.
All right. Being known that the Akushnet Board of Selectmen hereby extends its sincerest appreciation to Matthew Murray, Eagle Scout for Troop 11, the Board of Selectmen would like to recognize the leadership, compassion, and dedication to the town of Akushnet, shown through the Eagle Scout project at Perry Hill Schoolhouse Park. Your selfish act to showcase and beautify a part of our town will allow generations of townspeople to enjoy what you create for years to come. Ordered this day, May 9th, 2023.
Congratulations.
Want to get a picture with us?
Yeah.
Figures that they don't wear a tie, you know?
Mr. Cody and Mr. Murray, I would like you also in a set of these pictures.
Okay.
If we can pawn the camera off to somebody else here.
We'll grab one with just you guys before we ruin the photo with me and Mr. Cody.
Thank you.
Get it with your dad.
Couple's out, all right?
Put Mr. Cody inside. Without you, gentlemen, this wasn't going to happen either, so I just want to say thank you to you as well.
You're welcome.
All right, and a couple on this one. All right.
Great.
Thank you very much.
So much, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, my friend. Keep up the great work.
Thank you very much. Still have the staying stocking cap?
Oh, yeah.
He does!
I wear that those cold football games all the time.
Awesome.
And it must be limited edition too, because everybody asks, they're like, "Where'd you get that?" My dad knows the guy.
Knows the guy, yeah. He goes again, right?
Knows the guy. Get up in our neck of the woods.
Good stuff. All right, thank you. Item number one under new business is the Buzzards Bay National Estuary Program, Massachusetts Coastal Zone Management. David Janik?
Yes, sir.
Do you like, you ready up here?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
All right, as you said, my name is Dave Janik. I work for the Buzzards Bay National Estuary Program, which is part of the Office of Coastal Zone Management, which is also part of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs at the state. My job right now at the Buzzards Bay National Estuary Program is to help identify projects in communities, or projects in communities that fit well into a various number of grant programs, whether they be state or federal grants that are available right now. I can give you guys a little background, if that's all right?
Yeah, please.
Just a few pages that you follow along.
Thank you.
It's not intended for you to read these here right now, just so you can follow along on the process. But starting back in 2018, 2019, the town of Akushnet worked closely with the Buzzards Bay National Estuary Project on a stormwater monitoring and identification project. That went on through 2018, 2019, into 2020. That process was gone on with Akushnet and a number of other communities in Buzzards Bay. There were hundreds, if not thousands, of stormwater discharges that were identified. Many were sampled. A process was gone through by the NEP that identified the top 15 of those projects. That would be good projects, good projects that potentially construct, design and construct stormwater treatment facilities. That 15 was then whittled down to three projects. One of those three was at River View Park in Akushnet. And so the town and the NEP worked together with a consulting firm, and some designs were put together, and those designs, I got the whole roll I'm going to leave you with. On the fold-out page, that's just the front page of the designs, the final designs that were put together for the River View Park. That project went through the local conservation commission, got an order of conditions, and the next step was to be implementation. Now, I don't know what the reason was, but back in '21, '22, the town decided not to move forward with implementation. Often, I won't even guess what the problem or what the issue was, but what I wanted to come back here today is because through my whole career with the state, typically state grant programs require a match, usually 30%, 33%. Because of a large number of, a large number of state and federal grants right now that are coming through, both the state and the feds, many of the grant programs now have zero match requirements from the communities. And so I wanted to bring this project back around before the Board of Selectmen, point out the fact that you could potentially get, I think it'd be a very competitive project in the next grant round that's coming up at the NEP, probably sometime in June, July. I think this would be a very competitive grant to submit. If you were successful, likely it would be no grant requirement from the town, or no match requirement from the town. And you're looking at a project that's probably, I guess the original cost estimates right here were somewhere around $190,000. That was in '21. Maybe it might be a bit more by then. But it's essentially a way for a project for the town to get a great project done that would improve water quality, and really not on the town's dime, but just participation and willingness to move forward.
That's great. You know, we made a fair amount of improvements down there. What was kind of a dormant, we created the River View Park like 20 years ago, and then added to it a couple of years ago during COVID with some walking paths and things of that nature. And I think, you know, as a town we've considered, we'd love to be able to continue going forward along the Akushnet River. So I think to have this opportunity presented to us again, I think it makes sense to go forward. I don't know how you guys feel, but what exactly would be, would take place over there that you feel needs to be?
If you, in your packet there, if you go to sort of the most colorful page right here, may I just come up to?
Yeah, sure.
This is the neighborhood along Goulet Street, I think that's how you pronounce it. And the houses are in blue. The catchment area, or the area that stormwater runs off of, it right now comes down the various streets, and it discharges into the Akushnet River right over here. What this project would be, would be a collection of this stormwater runoff coming down here, and it would construct this detention basin right over here and run the stormwater through that area before it gets discharged to the river to remove nitrogen, bacteria, viruses, and various other pollutants. That's the primary piece of it. A secondary piece of it is this area right here called P1, which is just sort of a little bit of a treatment facility that would sort of take care of some of this upper area before it ran into the detention facility and then on into the river. That's what it would look like, and then the construction is pretty.
Are you familiar with what's going on with DEP and septic tanks? And, you know, potentially forcing residents to upgrade as?
I know as much as you probably know.
So I guess the question is, gentlemen, like, you know, if we were able to, again, even though I don't think we're going to be in the mix, but if we're, continue to show efforts to mitigate nitrogen and do our part, that could be yet another, you know, feather in our cap is if we have to ultimately deal with DEP.
Where I'm sure this will be a feather. Right now, your town is moving forward, as most towns are, on a thing called MS4. And it's the Municipal Stormwater System, another S4, where the S4 comes from. And you guys are doing things like, I know you have a stormwater website that is up and running. I know you've identified a lot of your stormwater discharges. You've sampled a lot of them. You also are recently going through an effort to identify illicit discharges in those, from those, into those stormwater systems, from homes that may have bypassed their septic systems, whatever. This MS4 program is being run by, directly from EPA, really. And so right now, they're requiring towns to do a lot of monitoring and assessment and stuff like that. And then the next step is priority setting of what your high priority stormwater discharges are. And the step after that is actually constructing things, facilities, to address those priorities. You guys, this project would essentially leapfrog you a little bit, well, probably a couple of years ahead of where EPA is going to eventually be to say, "All right, Akushnet, you've identified these five high priority stormwater discharges. What are you going to do to fix them?" This one would be one that you've essentially gone out ahead and got in front of the game, sort of.
Just, I'm a little bit familiar with this one, and it did take place several years back. I think you're right, 2018, 2019, there was one outfall that was identified. But I know some of the work where the outfalls weren't correctly identified from some previous discussions that we've had. I just, I think that this, you know, I'm all for anything that we can get for nothing, as long as there's no strings attached, I'm all for it. I just, we have an article for MS4 engineering. I think it's $50,000, and then $25,000 for some permitting money, for permitting for our side, the town's MS4 permitting. So I think we, you know, before we jump the gun, I think those files need to be extracted. We don't, I don't see the stormwater agent. I know that's written to DPW. It looks like that was written to DPW. Why, I don't know, because they weren't, you know? I know that they're responsible for basins and things of like, but we do have a stormwater authority. I believe we still have an engineer for the town. So I just, you know, I think some of this information should be relayed over, so it's, we got to get our house of cards in order a little bit better. We've been kind of sporadic and all over the map with MS4. It's very disturbing to me. So I think that this would complement what we need to do in MS4, but I just think we need to get a template from the engineers. This is where you've been, kind of what you're saying here. We've identified this, why it's taken so long is beyond me. And this is what we need to do, and this is something that we need, I think we should have reviewed by our MS4 engineer, and just kind of get his say on the matter.
That's fine.
And then we move forward from there. But I think if we're going to have an engineer working for the town, I don't want to piecemeal things, and that's kind of how things have been. And it's kind of, if you're going to have somebody come in and commit to the town of Akushnet to be the MS4 engineer, it's, you're going to take us from step one to get us to step 10. We're not going to start somewhere in step six and get to 10 and say, "Well, you didn't do steps one through five first." And that's kind of where we're at, and it's extremely disturbing. I think that we're trying to do our best to get that house of cards in order. I think that's coming, and I think that this board's going to play a much larger role in the MS4, along with conservation right now is the stormwater authority. So I would take this information, digest it, try to dig up those files for this outfall for the reasons why this outfall was identified as one, because I do remember it, and just try to get everything a little bit tighter knit before we start committing ourselves.
I've reached out to Mr. Hannan and Mr. Menard, just to make sure they knew what was going, what was going on. I'd be happy to sit down with them, with their engineer, to see if they have any questions that I could potentially answer.
Sure.
When we get to the part of, if you decide to move forward, the grant notice, you know, that will go out is probably going to go out in the next several weeks, so we can do this relatively quickly. And then I'll be happy, I'd be happy to even help the town write the grant application.
That'd be awesome.
For the funding.
Yeah, we can just get everybody on board that needs to be on board and stop the piecemealing, right? You know, Jamie's doing a little bit of this, DPW was involved. Are they going to continue to be involved with the stormwater authority? We're starting to get involved, because we sign off ultimately on our MS4 permits for the state, so.
Agreed, sounds good.
Mr. Kelly.
Two points. One, to follow up with Mr. Gaspar. The way the new article is written, the MS4 engineer answers to the Board of Selectmen. So that's, the Board of Selectmen will be a lot more involved than in the past. The second issue is from my communication and discussion with Mr. Janik. It was part of the reason for this not being a match is that the state is using some of the federal funds that are state funds now for ARPA as the municipal matches, so.
I don't know exactly how that's working. I just know that the state and the feds, a lot of money's coming down, and in an effort to try to get communities to move forward with the projects and to get the money out there, they're saying, "Don't worry about the match for now." So my guess is eventually, match will come back, and whether that's two, one, two, three years down the road.
We'll take advantage of the no-match all day. All day long. I just want to make sure that everybody's being brought, because it's kind of been sloppy. And this board's going to try to do whatever it can to keep it in an orderly fashion and keep good record-keeping of where we're at, so that if anything down the road comes back, history will be able to lead the trail, saying this is where they've been, this is the plan where to go, and we have a good MS4 plan in place for the town. It's no longer willy-nilly guessing, well, they're going to know what our cost structure is going to be, what cost structure's been in the past. Obviously, if we can get, you said, $190,000 in 2021, you're right, it's probably more money now. Everything's more money now, right?
I will point out, that's the one thing we would need to update before we went for the grant application, is trying to get a new number on what that $190 is in today's dollars.
So if you want, you said you talked to Dan already?
I've reached out to emails to him, and Dan basically said, I mean, it's Dan Menard and Pat.
Hannan.
But Dan basically told me, "Yeah, I worked with you with the NEP earlier on the identification of the discharges and all that," because his guys go out and they help lift up the manholes and things like that. But for right now, he pointed me in the direction of Pat, Mr. Hannan. And I haven't talked to him yet. I've tried to talk to him, or send him some emails, and then I just decided I'd start with Mr. Kelly here and see.
So then we'll just, look, you have the town administrator, right? We'll put it in his, back in his hands to coordinate with Mr. Menard or the DPW staff, Ms. Silver.
Yeah, the MS4 engineer.
MS4 engineer for record-keeping, Mr. Hannan, whatever they have on files pertaining to this outfall. But I think it's definitely something that, you know, I definitely have expressed a lot of interest in.
Sounds good.
Great, thanks, sir. Very much.
Approval, next item is approval of preliminary official statement from Hilltop Securities regarding school roof ban. Mr. Kelly.
There is information in your package that shows the various documents in front of you explains it. It's a ban, it's not a bond, it's a temporary note. Fidelity Capital Markets are the winning bid, 4.25%, with the premium of $4,646 and change. Net interest, $29,752.19. Hilltop Securities, which is our advisor, so advises us to go forward. We have to either go forward with a ban or a bond. And according to Todd Hassett, our interim accountant, it would be better to go forward with the ban, because we're still dealing with the punch list on the roof. It's almost completed. But if we went for a smaller borrowing or went postponed till we could go out to bond, we might not get this rate.
Okay. There's 35, well, it's 34, four, basically, who won the bid, Fidelity Capital?
Yep.
What's that for a year?
Yeah.
Or is that, what's the interest?
The interest is 4.25%, but you have a premium of 4.6, 4.625, which you deduct from the overall interest. So the net interest at $29,752 and change.
That's for a ban on $1,125,000 for one year?
Yep.
So we might not need to be in the ban for that long, depending on when the work, the punch list gets completed?
Well, it would take us at least six months to convert to bond and to go out to bond.
And you said, how would the ban be paid? Because we said, the board made a decision that we're going to use solar capital fund to do like a borrow in 15 years, when we calculated.
When we, when we put this into the budget, we can, as part of the motion, can go that way.
To use solar capital revenue, right? Because other than that, you're doing a debt exclusion, and that's something that the board was.
We decided on this like two years ago.
Yep, solar capital.
For the bond.
For the bond, yeah. So this, so the one, this payment right now, where's this money coming from?
That's in the budget.
Okay. And is this our final amount, the $1,125? Is that the town's obligation for the roof?
I'm sure there'll be a final determination when we actually go out to bond. I do not know the final determination from the school.
The number for the town was a little bit higher back then, when we were discussing it. It was more like 1.3, so it'd be nice if we came in at the 1.125.
And there have been issues with contractors, that there have been some changes that we have worked to the town's advantage.
Excellent.
The only thing it does say is prior to the execution, "We ask that each person sign a review of this certificate to confirm that it is factually correct." Mr. Kelly, did you hear what I just said?
Factually.
Correct, before we sign, and that's for the signatures, right? And I haven't looked at that.
They sent it to us yesterday, and they want us to overnight it to them tomorrow.
Is that something that our council would look at, or the bond council?
Bond council, our bond council.
So that's already been reviewed?
Yes.
So it's been cleared?
By our bond council.
So none of us should be, have any reason of concern for?
No.
Incorrectness like they're stating here?
No, or it would be their professional liability insurance would cover.
There is no emissions. Okay, boss, thank you.
All right. Motion to approve.
So moved.
And please don't leave until all the documents are signed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is appointments of Robert Brown and Marc Francois to the Bylaw Review Committee. We know both gentlemen, they're serving in various capacities with the town. Is there a motion to appoint?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I have a minute?
Yeah.
I was just concerned about, you know, one person being on too many boards and committees. I've had that discussion. It was a big thing in my election period. But after speaking with Ms. LaBoni, our town clerk, she actually educated me on the Bylaw Review Committee. I didn't realize, but being on the Bylaw Review Committee, you're only reviewing general bylaws, not zoning bylaws. And I never knew that. And she said the reason why is zoning bylaws require a public hearing two weeks' notice. There's a vetting process to be had. So I did have some concerns at first. So I did have some concerns at first, but knowing that it's just general bylaws, and I think we have a couple of general, well, one actually now, right, the general, the for town meeting approval. So with that being said, I have no, no questions or qualms of making the appointments for Mr. Francois and Mr. Robert Brown to the Bylaw Review Committee.
I'm okay with that, I think both gentlemen are qualified and handle it. Motion to appoint?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
We do need, we do need, Mr. LeBoni did state that we still need another full member, and we also need alternates.
That's what I was going to say, I would like to thank these gentlemen for volunteering, because we need to have people on this committee, and we need another one, like Mr. Gaspar said, and some alternates.
And all of us as well, so put that on the list, on the agenda.
So you have our information-only vacancy list, I think we should add some to that.
Right, just put it out there if anybody has any interest, right?
And just to clarify, too, that can be done by anybody in town, not somebody that currently serves on a board.
Correct, correct.
All right? Very good. You've got, next item, Bradford Street Sewer Betterment.
Motion to table.
All right, motion to table, all those, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the Kuschny River Valley Golf Course, updating us.
I was told Mr. Flynn was expected to come in.
He is expected to come in, but he's been dealing with traffic, with the construction of the Sagamore Bridge. As you recall, gentlemen, last year, I think it was, had asked the board to consider providing the golf course with the tools they need to chart the next 20 years, from a business standpoint, and they have hired a consultant, which we did when the golf course was under construction, and I think, you know, obviously, that business plan has, you know, exceeded its limitations, and so they've come up with NGF, National Golf, was the original firm that did the study. So we can hold off until Mr. Flynn comes, if you guys care to do that, I'm happy to do so. But it's been vetted by the Golf Course Committee, and I really feel strongly, while it sounds like a lot of money for a consultant, to write a business plan for a multimillion-dollar operation.
I don't think so.
I think it makes sense.
I see Mr. Isaac put in a note where, last Fall Town Meeting, there was appropriation for $300,000, so I'm assuming that was via an article?
Yes.
So can we use that for, like, capital planning? Is that how the article was written?
I'll have to check it with counsel, but I believe so.
So it says, recommendation is to take it from the article, and it's $27,000, it's, I don't think it's a lot of money, I think that, you know, I, I've been talking about a clubhouse out there for probably a decade, in order to bring in more revenues, if we would have implemented that back then, we, the clubhouse we pay for by now, so I think if, you know, National Golf Federation comes in, and maybe they'll make that recommendation to the town, and we can move forward, and hopefully possibly build a clubhouse that's in Dianita one, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Very good, Chairman. The staff, the golf staff, Mr. Isaac, Mr. Gulat, Mr. Flynn, have been working for six months to get this done, and I appreciate all of the patience they've had with me, and all of the questions I've asked, and I would just want to compliment the golf staff and our finance staff for all the meeting and the planning sessions that they've gone through to discuss this.
Okay. You mean the golf management committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the golf management committee is the...
Oh, yeah, Manny and Mr. Isaac.
They call themselves the Greens Committee.
Oh, okay.
I guess that's a golf term.
Okay, whatever.
All right.
But they've been in my office every other week for six months.
Good, thank you. All right, next item is appointment of a building inspectional planning department senior clerk, Patricia DeMello. We've interviews were conducted, Mr. Hanlon, were you part of that?
I was, yes, sir. If I may?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Mill came in actually applying for a different position, but through discussion with the town administrator, we ended up scheduling a second interview with Andy LeBois in the building department, because we felt she'd make her, be a real asset to that department, and she's completely on board and is willing to take the job. We finalized background checks and check references, and as of right now, she's willing to start, and I believe Mr. Kelly has a date that she'd be willing to start.
I have a date as of the 15th that she'll be willing to start, and one thing I'd like to highlight is one of her experiences in the past was, she was senior administrator for the city of New Bedford Traffic Commission.
That's, I...
Dealing with traffic tickets, and the public coming in objecting to traffic tickets. So that type of experience was very appreciated, but if she can get through that and customer service with a smile, then I think it's a pretty good harbinger of where we're going.
Motion to appoint? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great.
Next item, Troop 11, just waiting on the insurances, correct, those are on the way?
The, Matt came in, we made sure that all the documents were signed in all the appropriate places, and the insurance binders are on the way in.
All right. Motion to approve? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Tax collection report.
As you know, we have been going through an effort to collect or make sure that all the town's rights are preserved for over $450,000 over a number of years of uncollected taxes. And thanks to Angela and the folks in the treasurer collector's office, we have collected, as of right now, $307,467.67, and we've preserved the rights of the town for all of the other collections that we can, and we are still scheduling that effort going forward.
Well, I think...
So it won't happen again.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, for, I think for a resident to get that letter, but I think the board and the finance team kind of handled this really with compassion and kid gloves, right, where, yes, we're out to collect the money, but we didn't want to do so without, by, you know, intimidating people or what have you, so hats off to you and the team for doing that, but also for the people who are able to pay. You know, I mentioned this before, and I'll put a marker down now, with this money that's been brought in, and if we're able to collect the full, the full boat, I would ask the board to consider and work, consider with the finance team at a future date. We have, I think roughly around $400 and something thousand dollars of school debt to pay off from the additions and renovations, that obligation, and if we were able to use this essentially newfound money to pay that debt off, that would essentially be a tax, as close to a tax break that we could give to, to our residents and taxpayers. So if we're able to wipe that debt off, you know, in the next calendar fiscal year, I think that would be something that we should at least look into and think about, because it's, you know, pay off the debt, and then we would essentially only have like the police department on, on the books as far as, you know, debt to the taxpayer, that's something that they've been paying for a long time, and if we could wipe that out earlier than not, I think that'd be a good thing.
Think, first thing I was going to say, if we collected all that money in back taxes, we know tax rate went up to offset for the people that weren't paying, right, so it's an artificial increase on the taxpayers, I couldn't agree more. I mean, if that's something that we could do, I would ask for the town administrator with our interim town accountant, Todd, to look into that and see if we could do that.
We, we have been looking into the process of what we have to do with these monies. They have to be certified through the next year as free cash, and then in next year's town meeting, you can assign them to do exactly what you've proposed to do.
So free cash is going to be certified in the next few months, given we have a treasurer to do that?
Yep.
And then we could do it on the Fall Town Meeting floor?
It depends on whether the Commonwealth will actually certify by that point.
Sure.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
But the Commonwealth, especially in the first year of an administration, usually takes a while to certify free cash.
We could have a motion, the second, to have the town administrator report back within the next month or so on that process, because I hate to, so moved, hate to see it just, you know, people get about it.
Yep.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'd just like to say to Angela Chandler, our interim treasurer collector, phenomenal job in the time that she's been here in the town of Akushnet, I don't know if there's any way that we could ever truly, I know we paid her, but to repay her for her services as the interim treasurer collector and getting the town out of the bind that we were in. So I know tomorrow's her last day, I believe tomorrow's her last day.
Correct.
So if you're listening, Angelo, thank you very much for everything you've done for the town of Akushnet and its residents, we appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next item is Serpent Representatives, Dr. Joe. Mr. Kelly?
Don't say Doc.
Tanya came for the degree of Mr. Boucher.
That's what I'm, I'm confused.
The other Doc, the Boucher.
What's going on here? Is this an honorary degree or?
And he asked that you wait a week for his appointment.
Yeah, Mr. Boucher?
Yeah, he and I talked last night, and, but I need my reappointment.
Okay, so motion to appoint Mr. Kelly to Serpent Representative?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next item is Buzzards Bay Coalition, is that Brendan?
Yes, Brendan.
Hey, good to see you.
There's four copies of data, one per one.
Mr. Raskusson asked that I explain that there are four times a year, he has quarterly meetings, and this night is one of them, otherwise he would have been here himself.
We have a, yeah, Board of Directors meeting four times a year, tonight was the scheduled meeting for this quarter. That said, this is a project I'm very familiar with and working on since its inception. My name is Brendan Annap, Vice President of Watership Protection at Buzzards Bay Coalition, has it for 15 years.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I apologize. We have the moderator here in the audience, I don't know if you have another copy, he's going to be doing the articles on town meeting floor.
I absolutely do.
Thank you, thank you, apologize, Mr. Chairman, but good for the moderator to have.
Yep. So, thanks for having me back, or thanks for having us back, Alan, I was here previously, I'll just sort of go through it, about a little bit more than a year ago, we came to the Board of Selectmen with a project, to a large land conservation project that spanned from Akushnet through Matapoisa into Rochester, 241 acres, and discussed it with you, got a support letter for a grant application, the grant application ended up being awarded for a portion of the project cost. Late in the summer, we began to develop an application for a community preservation committee to request $85,000 of the total $6 million project cost, it was the grant application actually, the state grant that came in was $4.5 million, but the funding approach, as you might recall, was to request that each of the involved towns contribute $85,000 from community preservation. The, the issue that was raised at the time was that while the project protects wildlife habitat and water resources, and provides trail recreation activities on the property, because it would be open to the public, it did not have frontage on a public way or public road in the town of Akushnet. And the article was tabled last fall. We went back to the, planned to go back to the community preservation committee over the course of the winter, and in fact, in parallel, there was a significant development, and that's why I'm sharing this map with you. The significant development is that separately, we were able to get under contract in a budding piece of property that's 57 acres in size. So the original project is outlined in blue on your page, I mean, excuse me, in red on your page, and I actually marked each of your pages in the upper right as page one, just so you can see the zoom in on it, for the southeastern part of the town of Akushnet. So the original piece was in red, and that is actually still the request, the funds are requested for that project, but the new project is in blue. We've, so this is now under, under contract to purchase, and to purchase by the end of next month, in June, it'll happen at the same time as the other project closes, and in fact, we were able to get grant funding for the entirety of the new project in blue. So that's moving forward and will happen, and as you can see, that has three frontage points, there's two points on Matapoisa Road, and one point, and there's frontage at the end of Holly Avenue as well. So the concept here is that has been, long been, I mean, going back to the sort of development of the sawmill, the sawmill here in Akushnet is, is our most well-visited property actually all around Buzzards Bay. Second most visited is the Matapoisa River Reserve, which we had sort of built out in Matapoisa, it extends into Fairhaven, long sought an opportunity to extend that property into the town of Akushnet, into the southwest part of Akushnet, and this offers that opportunity. So there's an existing trail system over there with multiple trailheads in Matapoisa and Fairhaven, this offers the opportunity to put a small parking area and trailhead, and connect a trail system into the existing trail system from, from the town of Akushnet. So that's, that's the update that we brought to Community Preservation Committee this fall, I mean, this, this winter, with, with continued this, the same request that had been put in last summer, and this, that I wanted to give you the opportunity to hear that update directly from us, and give a chance to answer any questions.
So this parcel highlighted in blue, it says 10-4, 5, 6, 7?
Yeah, it's Assessor Map 10, lots 4, 5, 6, and 7.
What's, what's the cumulative acreage of that one?
Cumulative acreage of that one is 57 acres.
So the blue one's 57, additional on top of the original?
73. Oh, 73 in Akushnet, that's, so in Akushnet, this red and blue on that front page is, together is now 110 acres.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
For your access points.
Yeah.
I've spoken to a couple of the neighbors on Matapoisa Road, they do have some concerns whether there'll be parking lots in between their houses, have you reached out to the neighbors and actually spoke with them about how the access points might affect them?
I have not yet.
Okay, I'm going to suggest you do that, every neighbor was 100% in support of the project, very excited about the project, but they did bring up some points where parking lots, regardless of where they are, late at night, have activity that might not be the best, and a lot of your other properties, Trips Mill, the bogs, they're not directly next to a house, so if there's a car there, nobody really notices it at 11:00 at night, unless you're driving by. Some of the residents are just a little concerned that, you know, they're going to have to worry about cars pulling into essentially in between their yards.
Yep, yep.
So moving forward, if you're going to do anything involving parking lots, I would, I would appreciate it if you'd reach out to the closest of waters to that, and have a discussion with them in regards to that.
Yep, understood, that's, I appreciate that, it's a good...
Thank you.
You have, you do have staff, because I see staff over at the sawmill property, and you're right, very heavily trafficked over there, there's a lot of people that go over there.
Yep.
But you have... But you have staff for that concern. Would you have staff, say, you know, every night at 7:00 PM or whatever, you just go by and put the chain across the gate or whatever, you know, the poles and keep people out at night or?
We don't, we don't, we don't do that. We rely on relationships with the police department and have in this town as well as towns all around the bay to do that. And I'm not, I'm not gonna say that we're immune to that issue. That's, that can happen. But we've been able to to manage that relatively well.
I think I think Mr. Hinckley's point is very.
Actually, I would say the Sawmill was the one where when, you know, before we went to open that, that's the one where I got butterflies, like, well, how is this gonna go?
Yeah, but it's a parking lot and it's heavily traveled where, you know, this is a back road.
Yep.
And Mr. Hinckley brings a valid point from the residents, you know, you have a little inlet and you have traffic in and out. You don't wanna have that at, you know, nighttime and riffraff going on in the back. If you go in these little strips, they don't look very big. If you're just making that as an access point and you can open up a little wooded area with, you know, a lot that's, you know, 100 by 100 or whatever, that could bring, you know.
So that's our our property on the other side of the street. That's another option where I thought of sort of some alternate parking on the other side of the street. That's that's not in one of those confined areas, but the the southernmost of the two, I think, is is the ideal one. And and I'm not thinking of, we're talking about the Sawmill. Sawmill has a larger parking lot. I'm thinking about a couple of cars, the size for a couple of cars to park in there so that people can go in it.
Sure, sure. Excellent. I mean, thanks, thanks for coming in and demonstrating this on paper for for the board. I mean, it was a heavy concern of mine.
Yep.
I think a lot of people in town were kind of turned off by, we don't have access to it. What are we spending money on?
Yep.
I brought that point up, and I think now it's it's a huge game changer. I mean, you're you're basically conserving 110 acres. I mean, that's that's huge. We don't usually have that kind of opportunity, so that's awesome that we can do that.
All right.
And for the same amount of money.
Yeah.
The prior request.
Good work.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. All right, have a good night.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is a discussion, and the board will report at town meeting, because you held your report on this.
Yeah, we could just advise town town meeting that it's, well, in my opinion, it's a good deal. We have access points down as an additional 50-something acres. In total, is 110 acres that we're conserving.
So if the board will vote to either issue favorable or whatever report at town meeting, then we can put that over record?
Sure. So move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
One of us will be there to answer questions if necessary. I think I'm assuming the article will be led by the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chan, before we move on, seeing how we're on that, you know, articles, I just wanted to mention that I've done some back checking on the article that we were talking about for the two tracks that were being on Lake Street, which actually came out 1461 Lake Street. But the lots 14 and 15, those are two lots that we foregoed our right of first refusal on over a year ago, because something happened with the sale. So then it has, it re-triggers the Chapter 61 right of first refusal, but we already foregoed our right of first refusal on it. So there's no interest on my behalf anyway, so that would be looking to make a motion to table that article.
I'll second that.
So so with the moderator being here, that will be a motion to pass over that article.
However, he wants to conduct town meeting.
Great, thank you. Rep. Schmidt, you were gonna come in, so why don't you, I know you've got somewhere else to go. Why don't you round the floor and thanks for doing this. And as you recall, when we met at the MMA practice, it was like it was St. Patty's Day, got a chance to talk about some of the needs at the Council on Aging. And then Heather, our director, came in and sort of put a little bit more color to that. And I know you've got a big announcement you want to share with us.
Well, thank you very much, and I do appreciate the opportunity. Just wanted to announce to the town that myself and Representative Strauss were able to obtain an earmark in the House budget for $80,000 for the repair of the roof and HVAC to the Council on Aging.
That's awesome.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And of course, as always, I have to underline that it now has to go through the Senate. And we we know that Senator Montigny will help us with it in the Senate. And then has to be endorsed by the governor, but we have a very good relationship with the governor. We hope that we'll be able to carry forward, so we haven't reached home yet, but I think we're on first base and moving forward.
Right, well, in a short time, you've already had a huge impact. You had big shoes to fill with Representative Hendricks, and you've done that and and then some. This is what, twice in three days that we've seen you in Akushnet, which is awesome.
Three times.
That was, that was an awesome event at the Purple Heart Ceremony, and I just think it speaks volumes.
Rep. Schmidt joined us the day before at Matthew's Eagle Scout Center as well.
That's right. You are a, being a farmer, I think you'll appreciate this, you are definitely a workhorse, not a show horse.
Representative Strauss and I are very aware that we have big shoes to fill. Chris Hendricks did a great job around here, and that's always in the back of our minds. But we appreciate the working relationship that we have with the town administrator and each one of you, Mr. Hinckley, Mr. Wonar, and Mr. Gaspar. And you've really been helpful in showing showing us what the town's needs are, which then lets us go up and argue for the town up at the State House. So we gotta start on it and.
Well, we got you. One other item, though, I think, and this is the first in the state's history, if I got it right, the creation of the Agricultural Committee, which you are now the chairman of, and we've spoken, I've spoken with Mr. Hinckley. We do have an ag committee in town that we'd love to get you in front of at some point. You know, so maybe you can talk about that committee and your chairmanship.
Well, I will. You're, I thank you very much, Mr. Wonar. I appreciate that. And Massachusetts has never had a standalone ag committee. It's always been part of environment. And it's sometimes hard to argue for our farming friends when you're also working with the environmentalists and all who are very passionate. And God bless the speaker. He set us, he set agriculture on its own, and I was, yeah, I was honored to be appointed the House co-chair of that. On the Senate side, it's Senator Goby from out in central Massachusetts, a great, great partner, worked very well with her. And we'll be working hard. We all, here's a statistic. For those of us who are lucky to have three meals a day, and we all know that unfortunately there are some who don't, but for those of us who have three meals a day, in the course of a week, one of those meals would have been grown and prepared in Massachusetts. The other 20 come from out of state, and that puts us at a significant issue when things like COVID happen and supply chains break down. So there's a bunch of us in the legislature that wanna see Massachusetts flourishing with an agricultural community again. And so that is the goal of the ag committee, to support our fam, our farmers, our food production, and to get local, healthy food into our schools and into our underserved urban areas. So thanks, thanks. I appreciate your mentioning that, and I look forward to meeting with your ag committee and seeing what we can bring from the Department of Agriculture here to Akushnet.
That'd be great.
Maybe maybe you could pump the brakes on the solar farms, right? Because the last time I checked, you can't eat a solar panel. So that's where a lot of our farms have gone to, right, is solar farms now. So, and I agree, we need a better supply, food supply in in our Commonwealth, and not so much solar farms. I think we've done quite a bit with solar farms.
And you know, once you take an acre out of agriculture, it's very rare that it comes back in.
Correct.
So we wanna, yeah, pump the brakes, stop the loss of ag land here in Akushnet, in Westport, where I live and farm, and all over the Commonwealth.
Of course, of course.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to take the opportunity to compliment the representative on his staff. They've been working very closely with us, not only on this, but on the two earmarks we got last year for $25,000 each. And we've started conversation with them, with Selectman Hinckley, as far as the Apple Peach Festival. And we're going to put them in contact together with the Selectman Hinckley, who is pushing the, for cooperative effort on that.
Yep. Mike, you wanna talk about that?
Not really. We're still in the early phases of it, so rather than bore people with a handful of ideas, once we get some substance behind it, then I can put something together.
All right. Awesome. Great, thank you, Representative.
Great to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I'll be certain to reflect your.
Tell Jessica, she's great.
Knowing you, you'll be back here on Thursday, so we'll talk to that.
I just wanna let the record read. I really enjoy representing Akushnet. To me, it's a lot like Westport, and I'm pretty passionate about Westport, so thanks for letting me serve.
Thank you.
Great work.
All right, I guess the next, we've got a gentleman here, the school solar, is that gonna take?
Two minutes.
Okay.
We're progressing. The school will be coming forward in the future with some issues. I would like the town to consider going forward to begin a discussion on site fees, on personal property taxes with the facility that's going in there. They have opened the door to discussion, and so I think we should walk right through it. More revenue.
Okay.
See what it's all about when it comes in front of us.
All right, next item, sir, health insurance. Chris, big one, big announcer.
Awesome. Sorry, interrupted before I saw the screen go black and I had a little panic attack. I think we're gonna be loading up on this thing. Good afternoon, everybody. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good. So, oh, thank you. Awesome. I was just doing that. Awesome, thank you. So my name is Chris Nolte. I represent Gallagher, and I, by way of that, I represent MSHG. So MassHig Health Group is a health, is a health group formed by town managers for municipalities. So so who we, who are we, what we do, and why we're here today. So what's really exciting about what we built in the last three years in MassHig Health Group was we started with towns of Douglas, Dwyer, Charlton, and Webster, right? So we formed a group simply to serve municipal workers, right? So what we'll talk about today is a lot of things that we did to help out your membership to live happier, healthier lives. Important to note here, every member that joins MSHG gets a vote on the board, so you have a clear direction and path to look at alternative funding models, to look at, most importantly, probably to this board, as we said today, is your renewal conversation. I think Jamie could tell you, or Mr. Kelly can tell you, being in a fully insured environment where you live today, you get a increase from this, the carrier, right? You then argue over that increase for the carrier with very limited data, to say the least, and you end up with a general renewal, right? In MSHG, you are part of the conversation. You see your finances on a monthly basis. And then come January, February, we start to have a conversation what your budget looks like, and then we do try and fit that within our renewal. Obviously, the data, the claims is what really drives that conversation, but the beautiful thing is you do have a vote on that board, so you have a direct say in what that looks like. MassHig seek current benefits, that's important, right? So we do have a national network plan, so today, right now, we're part of Harvard Pilgrim. Should you make this transition, you also maintain the Harvard Pilgrim network for your membership, right? So that will not change. What's very cool about our network that your membership is not used to today is they'll be accessible to 50, a full 50-state network of doctors, right? So right now, for example, if you had someone that was either an early retiree, a snowbird, that went to Florida for three months a year, they'd have to come, so let's say they break their leg down in Florida, right? Of course, emergency care is accessible. You go to the hospital, you get your leg set, that's there. Any follow-up care, you have to come back to Massachusetts if you're part of the HMO plan, right? Under our network plan, which is akin to our HMO plan, you can seek your care down in Florida, because we ax the United Healthcare Network down there. We'll talk a little bit of what that looks like. We we offer a whole lot of bells and whistles, which we'll talk about in a little bit here. Also, probably most important to this board, as we said today, other than the quality of the plan, is our average yearly increase. So right now, we're hovering right around 3.7%. That's our increase year over year for the last three, now four years. Our average Medicare renewal is less than 1% as we sit today. So those are really strong numbers as far as how we manage our costs, once you're part of our ecosystem. Right now, as we sit today, we have over $10 million in surplus. This slide's a little bit outdated now, so we are doing well as far as managing our costs as time goes. On-demand access to data, we think is the most important thing for your decision-makers to have accessible to them, so we do. Jamie, as as the town administrator, we're gonna log in to see high, high-level claims data. Also, again, we'll be given a financial report monthly, and then any ad hoc reporting that that's requested from the town. So what we say is it's an awful position to be in to come in front of this board probably and say, hey, we have a huge increase coming our way, without any kind of knowledge ahead of time. If for whatever reason you did have a large increase coming your way, you would see that coming from November, December, January, February, so it wouldn't be a surprise any given fiscal year. So we think that's pretty important. Conchier service for all members, we'll talk what that looks like, but needless to say, your membership will have extreme amount of support to what they're used to underneath the market today. Ability to work with outside broker, important note, just like this meeting today, we are, we are governed by open meeting law. So our board meets in an open meeting, which allows people to see what's going on, no closed doors. Again, what you'll hear out of my mouth a lot today is open doors, complete access to data. So again, we started four years ago, almost today, Douglas, Massachusetts, Dwyer, Charlton Regional School District, Town of Webster. We've grown substantially since then, the city of Fall River, the Town of Stow, and on our Medicare-only plan. And then part of our entire group is also now the Town of Franklin, Town of Medway, Northbridge, Oxford, and Abington. To put in perspective, this year, if Akushnet joins, we'll have seven new members as well. So you'll be one of 15 members on the voting board. Any questions? I've just thrown a ton at you all at once with a whole lot of introductions, so any questions of where we are today so far? See how excited the crowd was to see the insurance presentation?
I don't know what level, and this is just bringing to us, but we've got, I think we have an obligation to talk with our employees and.
We've done.
Have you done that vetting process yet?
Oh, yeah, no, Jamie has brought us in front of the IAC once, I would say, and then we've had several communications back and forth with some of the IAC membership. I think they looked at it fairly fondly. I think what you're gonna hear today, frankly, is you're gonna get a lot of what you already have today with a lot of bells and whistles and a whole lot of access to information, right? We'll kind of speak to that if you want. I can kind of zip through some of this stuff, if, because your membership is, I think, advocated for it at this point. I think the finances, once you kind of get an idea of the quality of the program, the finances will kind of dictate a lot of this decision, if that makes any sense to you.
Sure.
All right, cool. All right, so again, HPI by the numbers, not gonna spend a lot of time on this slide, 97% client retention rate, obviously it's important. They do a good job for their clients. This speaks to the 50-state network, right? So we are the only group in Massachusetts, MassHig Health Group, that provides a 50-state network plan for municipal workers, right? Again, you could be anywhere in the country and seek care. In Mass, New Hampshire, and Maine, we we use the Harvard Pilgrim network. In all other 47 states, we use the United Healthcare Network. It's a massive network of doctors that your folks currently don't have access to. Any questions on that? That's a huge difference. Also, part of our plan is we eliminate referrals. So all your folks in the HMO plan that have to get referrals from their primary care to do anything, that's eliminated moving forward, right? We do that because there's been found there is some waste in that model at this point, right? HMOs were formed 20 years ago, 30 years ago, and married narrow network senses. That's changed completely now. Now HMOs are completely broad network. That make sense, everybody? If I'm speaking too fast or saying things that don't make sense, please just slow me down here. You're gonna skip right by this one if it works for you. This one talks about our ecosystem, right? So a lot of health insurance carriers, for example, that come in here as Harvard Pilgrim or Blue Cross, right? MSHG is kind of the glue that binds all of our relationships together. So I'm gonna quickly just run through these, just to give you a gist of what your membership has available to them. HPI is a third-party administrator, completely owned by Harvard Pilgrim, hence why we use the Harvard Pilgrim network. They are located in Massachusetts. All of their customer service folks are located in Westboro, Massachusetts. Their sales staff is located in Massachusetts, so it is nice to have a local carrier servicing your people. Ed is obviously a national carrier. Etna is obviously a national carrier. They're located in Rhode Island, in Connecticut for that matter. We use that for our Medicare plan. We'll talk a little bit about that. Express Scripts is our pharmacy benefit manager. That's where we procure our medications from. CanRx is a really cool function and program that we offer through MSHG. It allows members for any kind of brand-name drugs to import those drugs, believe it or not, from outside the United States back into the United States from countries like Canada, UK, New Zealand. So basically, tier-one countries that speak English. Tier-one countries are countries that have equal or greater standards in the FDA, right? They have to be English-speaking because your bottle medications have to be in English. Makes sense, more or less, right? SwiftMD, an awesome service, right? It's 24/7, 365. You can pick up the phone, talk to a doctor that could diagnose or prescribe medication right over the phone, right? No copay to membership. They just have to go pick up their meds if they get prescribed anything. OptiMed, another nice function of our program here and allows for folks to get in-home infusions, right? So you have a lot of people going to the provider office to get their infusions. We allow you to get those at home under care of a nurse, right? All these things that we're doing is, believe it or not, is actually lowering our cost. It's increasing access to care but lowering our cost. Brightline, a great service. This one's not a control of costs, but pediatric psychology is a severe issue in the state of Massachusetts, really the entire country. Anyone who's dealt with this understands that if you try and find a pediatric psychologist, you're three to six months out, right? The idea with Brightline, we can get you in front of a pediatric psychologist within 72 hours. That's incredible for someone going through something like that. Good Health Gateway, awesome program. Again, diabetes management program. So any diabetic that participates with the Good Health Gateway program gets all their supplies and medications waived, cost, right? The idea is a well-managed diabetic is a happy, healthy diabetic, right? They stay out of the hospital. There's a whole lot of science behind that. Retiree First, that's our conscientious program for Aetna. And then we have Pinnacle Care as well, which is an awesome program. It's a second opinion program. So what that does is, if you get a severe diagnosis, you can call Pinnacle Care. They'll give you a second opinion. They'll, again, this is all voluntary, what I'm saying. They'll literally grab all of your medical records of all of your conditions, have it looked at by a panel of doctors, and then give you a second of opinion, right? That sounds like a nice to have until you hear the stats behind it. One out of four times Pinnacle Care gets involved, there's a change in diagnosis or care path. Like, think about that. One out of four diagnoses get completely changed when a panel of doctors looks at it, right? That's pretty remarkable. And then again, HPI, who they are. Also, now on this slide, because the board just decided to move forward, is HealthJoy. That's a conscientious service. For now, the actives as well, right? They'll do things like book you appointments for specialists, so on and so forth. Any questions? Again, throwing a lot at you real quick here. Right? Also, part of our program is Medicare migration, right? Up until the year of 1986, teachers really did not pay into the social security system, right? What that did is now have a pool of retired folks that are on your active plans simply because they are not eligible for Medicare because they did not pay into the system like we all did as private citizens, right? Because of that, nature of the world we live in, nature of who we are as we grow older, we tend to get, need to get more fix-ups, like we need to visit the doctor a little bit more often. So there's very expensive people to insure on your plan, costing your entire membership more money than they need to. So what we do is, through our plan, and we use the conscientious service to do this, we actually pay the people's penalties, make them eligible for Medicare, and then move them over to Medicare. Why do we do that, right? So we had seven, sorry, five groups moved to MSHG last year, and this represents the savings and the cost of those five groups. We moved $1.6 million of claims out of those five groups, right? And we spent $600,000 in penalty. So if you think about that, in your active plan, right, we moved $1 million of cost out of that active plan simply by migrating the membership over, right? There's a lot of benefits to those members, too. If you think about your plan design, in your active plan, there's deductibles and copays, so on and so forth, right? In the Medicare plan, there's no deductibles, no copays for services. And by the way, the premium is a heck of a lot less for both the town and the member, right? So it's one of those weird things. It's very strange in insurance where everybody kind of wins. Your entire membership wins because you get a small renewal, right? Obvious, you take out costs from a plan, small renewal. The town wins because you're funding less, not only by way of renewal, but you're funding a lower-costing plan. You're funding a Medicare plan now instead of an active plan. Does that make sense, everybody, right? And the actual member that gets migrated wins because they're paying less in premium and then less out of their pocket when they go see a doctor, right? And by the way, less out of their pocket when they pick up medications. So it's really one of those rare scenarios where everyone wins. Everyone wins, by the way, because the feds highly subsidize Medicare plans. They do not subsidize active plans. Does that make sense, more or less? Am I going too fast, too slow? All right, cool. Renewal history. We kind of already touched upon this, but it's important to see out in front of you. So we started back in fiscal year '20 at total funding of 16.1 million. Today, we are at a total funding of 17.6 million. So what you could see is an average increase of less than 3.5%. That's remarkable, especially coming out of COVID, if you think about it, right? Again, total cost, what you see from fiscal year '20 to '21 is a massive jump of 13%. If folks can think about how claims work, right? It takes a little while for your claim to get to an insurance carrier to pay that claim. So fiscal year '20, that was our first year together, right? So it took some time for those claims to get into our system. By fiscal year '21, those are fully mature claims. That's why you see that surge in cost. And it kind of levels out from there, as you can tell. What's really cool is we think in fiscal year '23, our total net cost in these three original groups will actually go down. That'd be super cool if that happens. Anyway, that's kind of our exciting financial results. Any questions on that? Right? What's very cool about what we do is, right now, in Harvard Pilgrim, your pharmacy benefit manager is OptumRx, right? Should you move to MSHG, it'll be Express Scripts, right? Right now, you're fully insured, so it's very convoluted, but you are contracted with Optum through Harvard, right? With us, you'll be contracted directly with Express Scripts. What does that do for us? Obviously, anyway, anytime you get rid of someone in the middle, you tend to save that a bit of money there. So we receive all the rebates, and we get the lowest average wholesale cost because we directly contract with the pharmacy benefit manager. That's been a huge win and a source of a rate stabilization fund for MSHG that's grown large throughout the years. So this year, fiscal year '23, again, this slide is outdated. We're now up over a million bucks, and we're over $2.5 million here to date over three years. Again, that's money that was already out there. If the plan design didn't change, we simply found a different funding mechanism. Any questions on that? All right. I'm not going to go too far in the Medicare Advantage Plan other than to say Medicare Advantage is a very scary thing when a member first hears it, right? Because they think of all these horror stories, right? You've all seen the obnoxious commercials, I'm sure, right? With our favorite football quarterback trying to sell Advantage Plans, right? Issue with individual Medicare Advantage Plans is it's pretty extensive, right? So they're narrow network plans. That's awful. You have to get referrals. That's challenging for that population because they aren't used to doing those things. A group Medicare Advantage Plan, all that's out the window. All right, I'll come back to this slide. You're an ESA PPO. What does that mean? All Medicare providers nationwide. Access to all Medicare providers nationwide. So we do have a network, but it's the same benefit in and out of network. Does that make sense before I keep going? That's totally different than individual Medicare Plans. Members do not pay more for out-of-network providers. And again, it's a national network, not that it matters because it's the same coverage in and out of network, and then no referrals are needed. So what I always talk to a crowd, and Jamie, you've seen this, I'm sure, a couple of times now, I always say, if you remember nothing else I say about our Medicare plan, remember the following. You can still see the same provider you're going to see. You can still get the same drugs you're getting today, and you're not going to have any referrals, right? That's the important thing that people need to remember. Also, the cost, which is what we'll get into in a bit, which should be, I'll say it's right up there, perfect. Last thing to say is, this is our Retiree First, our advocacy program just for our Medicare folks. It's a really good program to have. First and foremost, we put out a kickoff breakfast or lunch, depending what the town's looking to do. We always say breakfast is always the best because that's when you get people at their best usually. But just really quick, I'm going to run you down kind of the right side of that page. So has anyone ever had to get a prior offer before for a medication? It's a pain in the butt. It can be a pain in the butt, right? So what Retiree First does is they reach out. So let's just say the member goes to the pharmacy. Your drug's not covered under prior authorization, right? That usually is a phone call to your office at that point saying, this plan is terrible. My drug's not covered, so on and so forth. Instead of that phone call, though, they call Retiree First. Retiree First then calls Aetna to confirm that that's actually the problem, right? Then calls your provider to get the prior paperwork filled out, gets the paperwork to Aetna, gets approved through Aetna, then calls the pharmacy, tells them to fill the script, then calls the member to actually go get the script instead of the member having to do all that, right? That population, it's very hard for them to do all those things. I would say it's very hard for anyone in this room to do a lot of those things. I'm in the business, and it's hard for me to get through some of those things when my wife went through IVF. So it is a challenge, and they're here to help you through the whole thing. And I think I have offered references for MSHG. It's their highly referenced. I could say in front of you, all the towns that have joined are happy that they have joined, not only because of the finances, not only because the renewals are palatable, but also the experience for their members is second to none. We take that very seriously. I think if you saw the ecosystem page, we certainly wrap your membership with a whole lot of health and services. That's it for the quality of the program, what it is. I think the IAC is very much in favor of moving forward with MSHG. We can't move the Medicare plan for '71. That would have to be kind of a '91 transition if this board decided to move there. That's just timing. It takes longer to migrate a Medicare population than an active population. All right. So any question on the quality of the program, what it is? All right, let's talk about the finances. All right. So here's where you are currently. Harvard Pilgrim came in with a 31% increase on your population. Obviously, the town budget would have a hard time sustaining that, I'm sure. Obviously, the membership would not appreciate that as well. It is a 60-40 split here. But again, it's a large increase for your membership to take. Moving from there, the original offering from MSHG was a plus 16, right? And again, to redo this through a whole lot of the things that we've already talked about, the savings, that's how we're able to be as low as from Harvard Pilgrim as we are. Since that conversation, we've been able to look further at your claims and seen some of your larger losses come off your plan. And because of that, we were able to update this. And Jamie calling our office and sending several emails to reduce this rate down even further, we are now at a 10% renewal over your current plan.
And that includes the contribution.
That includes the contribution, correct. Right? Beyond that, the amazing part about our plan, right, is if you look to the bottom, our Aetna plan costs $300 per subscriber per month. Right now, you're paying $398 per subscriber per month, right? For a plan that's not as robust as the plan that we're offering, your membership is paying 40% of that, right? So I guess at the end of the day, what I'm trying to tell you is the quality exceeds what you currently have, and I'll stand in front of Harvard Pilgrim and say that. And the cost is less than what you're currently, I'm not less than what you're currently paying. So when you include our Medicare plan and our 10% increase, the town budget will see a less than 2% increase. So you went from what would have been a 30-some-odd percent increase to the town budget to, you know, right below a 2% increase to the town budget. So we're happy about that. Our goal is to not show you a 10% increase next year.
10% to our health insurance, but.
Correct. And to put this in perspective for you, if you were a part of MSHG and you did receive a 10% increase, that'd be the highest increase we would have provided a group this year. Any questions? I just threw a ton at you in about 18 minutes.
Look, we've been following this, tracking it along with Mr. Kelly, and so this isn't the first time this has come across our desk. But I think it's, hats off to Jamie for being resourceful. Sometimes people take the path of least resistance, eh, whatever. But I think Jamie treated this process as if it was his own household, and I think that's really commendable. So thank you. Gentlemen?
As long as the employees are okay with it. I mean, you know, it all sounds good. Sales pitches always do.
They always do.
You know, year one, year two, we'll see what happens, year three, four, and five.
Here's what I can tell you.
You know, it's nice that your group's growing because I think the more the group grows, the more costs will come down, which is the proof's in the pudding, right? And longevity is what matters. And you seem to have some, you know, one thing I can say is I recognize the names that are on the board, the quality providers, right? I mean, you can't get better than them, so.
Yeah.
You know, and I think it's great as long as it's all about the employees and making sure that they understand what they're getting. All health insurance, and I think there's a lot of advantages to this plan. You know, the non-referral thing is huge, right? You have a situation come up. The last thing you need to be doing is dealing with a doctor that's not calling you back, especially if you have a child that needs care. No, I can't go because they're not in the network, you know, one of those deals. I've been through a little bit of this stuff in my past. It was just a pain in the butt. So I think that this plan opens the doors for everybody where they can just go wherever they want. So again, as long as it's communicated to the employees, they understand what they're getting, and everybody's on board with it, you know? If there's a savings for the taxpayer and there's a savings for the employer, it's a win-win to me.
Absolutely. What I want to say about the sales pitch is, I represent a board at the end of it. I work for Gallagher, for sure, but my board is who dictates every decision that gets made in this plan. So what I will say is, an insurance sales pitch is a little bit different than what I'm offering. Everything I'm saying, there's a town managers and a board that's dictating what goes on in this plan. It's not a health insurance executive. It is a bit different, is all I want to say on that one, just to make sure.
There you go. Zero questions. I think it was pretty informative. And like Mr. Gasper said, ultimately comes down to if the employees are comfortable with this and happy with this, as am I. Right. Thank you. Kelly, what are you going to hear from us right now?
First of all, I'd just like to say that Chris has worked with Carla, worked with the IAC, worked with our consultant. When we started to narrow in and focus on his group, they made sure we, every question was answered. And then when we proposed an unusual way to join to lower the rate, they worked with us great to get that done. I find it interesting that we had Harvard Pilgrim, who was told us 31%. And now, one of the people, one of the groups they use is Harvard Pilgrim, and we're coming in at 10%, so. And we've got a lot of other groups. And I'd asked that Chris mentioned the dental and vision, which is a little different.
Yeah, that's exciting, too. So also part of MSHG, we use Altus Dental, right? So right now, you have Guardian, right? You used to have Altus, I think, three years ago or so, or four years ago or so.
Five years ago, yep.
Five years ago or so. I don't have the comparison with me to show you, but needless to say, the plan design, similar to what we're talking about, the plan design is much better than what you currently have, and the rates are lower. And now we can offer vision in retire, oh, that's also awesome to say is your retirees have not had access to vision or dental prior to this. They will now have access to vision and dental because of this. So yeah, it's kind of been, I think it's been a good one for the town. And I hope if I'm in front of you a year from now, you'll think so, too.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. All I need to vote for is the town to continue and to join the Mass Strategic Health Group.
As long as we have a commitment from our employees.
We've gone through all of the IAC, and they seem to be all on board.
Have they taken a vote yet? Do they need to form a neuralized?
Under the law, because there's no plan design change, we can't ask for a vote. But according to NFP, they are all on board with it, which NFPs are consultants.
I mean, in that media, I mean, obviously, I'm here, but they seem very, you know, it's exciting about health insurance. Let's call it what it is. But as excited as someone could be about health insurance, they seemed interested.
The way that, the way we'd have to vote is to go through the sections of the law we don't want that deal with the GIC. So it's a consensus.
I hate, you know, I think in past years, some changes have been made. And then two or three months down the road, you hear, you know, that certain people really weren't on board, and I just don't want to make that mistake. And I just want to make sure that the commitment's made. You know, I don't need, I don't need every, you know, Carla, you said Carla's heading this off. And if she's got a list of everybody that's in plans and say, yep, 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 and can say that, sit back to the board and confirm that everybody that we currently have on the books is good to go, I'm good to go.
It's a consensus from the IAC.
Yeah, but what's that committee? That's like five people.
Insurance advisory.
I know. It's a couple of retirees and a couple of employees.
We can't deal directly with the employees. We have to, because it's, they are representatives of all the unions.
What's the timeline on this? Like, if we were to hold this off, say, to the next meeting? Is that an issue? Just to get further confirmation?
When's your next meeting?
Mr. Gasper?
It won't be for that. I mean, we could probably have something simpler. I'm thinking the 17th, which is a Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman, can we ask the IAC for a letter stating that they recommend this? Is that?
We can, management can't deal directly with the IAC. So I can ask NFP to provide a letter.
Who's NFP?
Our consultant.
Let's see. As far as we stand, so we're going to, we'll act as if you're moving, I suppose. And if you don't, then that'll cause some challenges, but no, we need to be on movement. I mean, we're 60 days out. This is.
We have, the problem is, we've. We have, the problem is, we've got to go, within a week, we have to be going to do the.
Open enrollment, yeah.
Open enrollment period.
Can we wait until Wednesday, the 17th?
That, open enrollment was going to be next week.
Can we do, let's say, Tuesday? We're going to host a meeting for Friday, Friday afternoon, Friday morning?
And get a letter from NFP?
Just something so we can have it memorialized, and it's double, just double-check. Are we good with that?
I'm okay with that. Let's do it towards Friday afternoon.
Yeah, I mean, it's whatever, it's whatever the boards, I'm sorry, I was looking at my calendar to make sure everything's going.
From my perspective, I mean, you did the pitch quick.
Yeah.
I think it's great, right? I've been through this before, and I don't want to go through it again because, you know, you do aggravate some employees, and the last thing I want to do is lose an employee or employees over, you know, picking a healthcare plan. I think it's a win-win, right? I mean, anybody can see that. It's just the particulars. I mean, I think if you're not requiring, you know, in-network doctors and no referrals, how can it be a lose? You could still keep your same doctor. We've heard that before, though, and it's not true.
But you're literally saying you're taking a Harvard Pilgrim network, which you're in today.
Yeah.
We're, yeah, whatever the board wants to say, this is a mute decision to me.
It's staying in the Harvard Pilgrim, though.
Correct, exactly. Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is if you're looking for 180-some-odd people about employees that are on the plan, for all 100% of them to say, "Yes, let's do this," I think you're going to find that a challenge, right? I don't think you're ever going to get 187 people agree on what day it is, let alone what health insurance plan to go into. So I just want hazard you, if that's their philosophy going into this, I, to be frank with you, I would think you're going to end up staying where you are, right? Because you're never going to get 187 people to agree on anything, right? I think you, city elected official, I think you understand that. So I just hazard you on that. Your IAC seemed very approving of it. I think Friday's fine if that's what you guys want to look forward to do. But just, I always try and check that mindset of 100% of agreement, except I've never seen it happen. I work with a few.
He's the working man. Noon time, a lunch meeting, Mr. Onas, you're Friday, you said?
I'll have to zoom in.
I will, I'll do it on record. Noon sign.
All right, do a lunch thing, so it's easy for you.
Get a letter from him.
Just do something quick.
Yeah, a little bit of due diligence for a couple more days, I think is pertinent. I think it's beneficial to everybody.
You're not saying that I can't, or he can't, or he can't, as selected. We can't talk to some of the employees and say, "Was this vetted with you?"
Well, it's vetted with the IAC, whatever the IAC representatives have done.
So it's changed.
Otherwise, after next week, we're at Harvard Pilgrim for 31%.
Now, I, look, I know that's not something that I would want. I don't think it's something that anyone would want.
It wasn't after redo.
Healthcare costs have been budget busting for years for the town, right? Both, on both sides, right? Employees and the residents, the taxpayers. So, look, all healthcare systems are broken in the country.
I mean, we have to go to open enrollment next week.
That's fine. So noon o'clock? At town, you post a meeting for noon?
Get a letter from NFP, IAC, all the other acronyms, call it a day.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. I'm just still your laptop. Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
You too.
All right. Gentlemen, how does administration, budget, how does administration report? Anything?
I gave you a document to look at. It concerns a state program we were just told about. That program talks about having the state pay for feasibility study for abandoned or non-used buildings. It came to mind, the Russell Library, and if the state wants to contribute up to $100,000 or more on a feasibility study of what could be done for a building in the center of town, I, we can go through the portal and start the process. Doesn't mean we have to.
No harm in doing that, gentlemen.
Start. But I'd ask the board to look it over and see what's going on. You should also look at some info only. Fire Department, it has a grant that they're announcing. But that's all I have right now until we get through town meeting and the budget. We're halfway through the writing the motions.
All right. You're good. Gentlemen, anything under announcements?
Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there.
Same. And Mr. Chairman, I must be second to last meeting as chair, rather than not saying over Zoom, good luck in the election and.
Fair enough.
Really, but that.
Thanks. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Say it.
All those in favor?
I.